I would like to call the one could join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could we have a roll call, please, Irene?
Yes. Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Brigham.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Walter.
Here.
Thank you.
Before we move on to conflict of interest, I just like to take a moment and remember a former council member who passed away on May the 11th. John Dobell, and you might recognize that name, Dobell, is, he is the uncle of Kevin Dobell, former mayor of Ukiah, and of course, he has a couple of projects in front of the city now. But his uncle, John, I knew for quite a few years, as did I know Kevin Thompson worked with him when he was on the city council here in Cloverdale. John was on the city council from 1986 to 1993, and he served two terms as mayor in 1988, that was 32 years ago, and in 1993. He was also partners with Dobell Thompson. John, in 1969 to 1970, he was the lead surveyor, doing the survey work on Lake Sonoma, the Warm Springs Dam. He was also heavily involved in Cloverdale Rotary and with the Citrus Fair. Good all-around type guy, always had had a positive outlook on everything. So I just wanted to take a minute and pass our condolences along to Kevin and his wife. So with that being said, that's the end of roll call. If any council members would like to say anything about John, you're more than welcome. Otherwise, we'll just go ahead and move along.
I just, well, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add that I volunteered alongside John. I mean, he was retired, but never inactive, and he just was a leading member of our community, and he's going to be greatly missed.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, why don't we move on to conflict of interest? Does any council member or staff member have a conflict of interest with tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, we're going to move right on to agenda review. And I'm going to make a suggestion that we, I'd like to move item number nine, which is the the My Brothers Keeper Alliance pledge, item number nine. I'd like to move that up right before public comment. And this way, we could possibly answer some questions if folks have a public comment they'd like to make. So if there's no objection to any other changes by staff.
Mayor, members of council, a matter has come to my attention that in order to act upon, it would be required for the council to consider it an urgency item and bring it on the agenda this evening by a four-fifth vote. The particular item is in regards to a matter involving a feasibility study report for the Potter Valley project. Staff was informed on Monday that comments are very important to be submitted to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission by the city of Cloverdale. So that request came after the agenda was posted last week. The request is that the council vote to add the item to the agenda. The item would be a letter addressed to FERC providing comments on the feasibility study and authorizing the mayor to sign the letter on behalf of the city and ultimately submit it to FERC for their consideration. In order to, again, add this item to the agenda tonight, it does require a four-fifth vote as an urgent matter. And included with that are findings of urgency as to why the matter can't wait, and that's due to the deadline for submission of comments, which is June 28. Again, why it's important is because it's relative to, it pertains to an important source of water for our municipal water wells that provide water to our residents and our business community. And again, this did only came to our attention after the agenda was posted last week on Thursday. It came to my attention on Monday. So we're asking the council to add this item as an urgency item to the agenda tonight. It would be the pleasure of the council as to where council wants to take that item up. It certainly could fit under new business if the council thinks that's appropriate.
And Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment. The item, the reason, as David mentioned, the reason for the four-fifths vote, it's really what often is referred to items too late for the agenda, and this item didn't make it to the agenda, and that's for the four-fifths vote. And the four-fifths vote requires some findings of urgency, and that's why, but it's the, normally, it's the items too late for the agenda, kind of, you may have heard it referred to as that.
Thank you, Jose.
Mr. Mayor, is it my understanding that you need a motion to add this to this evening's agenda?
Why don't we go ahead and?
I'll move the item.
Yeah, let's just do it now, as long as David's already given us a staff report.
Right. Well, no, we can just, we could vote to add it to the agenda, and then we can discuss it any, that's my understanding, we can discuss it at any time this evening. But I'll just make, I'll just make a motion to add the item to this evening's agenda.
And I'll second.
Irene, could we have a short roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Yes.
And Mayor Walter.
Aye. And seeing how we all received a copy of this, I believe it was yesterday, in the form of an email, and David's already given somewhat of a staff report, why don't we just take it up right now, if everyone's okay with that? David, are you all right with that?
Absolutely, Mayor. The letter was distributed to the council. I believe Irene has posted it online, or will post it online, so it'll be available for public review. Again, this is a letter addressed to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, regarding the feasibility study report of the Potter Valley project. And this addresses a for feasibility study for a tubation solution that was spearheaded by Congressman Huffman. And the intent is to continue conducting analysis to ascertain how that project may be implemented and address environmental considerations, including removal of Scott's Dam, addressing the need for sedimentation removal in the Eel River, as well as continue to provide some diversion of water in an environmentally supportable way to Lake Menaseno that ultimately is a source of water for the Russian River and our municipal water system. Mayor, that really concludes my report. I'm happy to entertain any additional questions. And of course, our city engineer, Mark Raccoon, has been tracking the project along with councilmember Bagby through the Upper Russian River Water Association.
Councilmembers, any questions or comments on the items? Okay, well, then why don't we take a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Irene, could we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter. Thank you.
Might have to take yourself off mute, guess.
Jose, did you want to add something to that? It looked like you wanted to say something. No, no, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Then why don't we go ahead and move to item number nine, new business, My Brothers Keeper Alliance pledge. And David, is that your item, I believe, in the chief's?
Mayor, I'm happy to address the council, you and the council on this matter. The item before you, and item nine of the agenda, is a resolution that affirms the council's pledge to My Brothers Keepers Alliance to address police use of force policies. Just by way of background, as we know, there's, the last week, the last few weeks, there's been a number of events across the United States, really across the world, related to the tragic death of George Floyd, that has left a very significant impact, impression on our community. In response, there's been a call for action to advance, requesting communities to affirm their commitment to equity, justice, and fairness, and work to really redefine public safety so that it recognizes the dignity of all individuals. The mayor, on June 10th, convened a meeting with other mayors of Sonoma County, at which time it was a unanimous decision to take the pledge of My Brothers Keepers Alliance to commit to actions related to review of use of force policies by our local police departments and Sonoma County Sheriff's Department. In addition, our police chief, Chief Jason Ferguson, issued a statement in which he assured the community that he's going to continue his pledge to community policing and continue to support every member of our community, including evaluating and considering the eight can't wait to look at those use of force policies. We're asking the council tonight is to adopt the resolution in support of My Brothers Keeper Alliance, the kind of four main components to that alliance, and that includes to engage a review, starting with a review process of our use of force policies. Council, at your last meeting, I did recommend and refer review of use of force policies to the Police Finance and Admin Subcommittee, which will start that process at the very next meeting, the first Tuesday in July, and that is a public meeting. Following the review process, there's the Alliance pledge called for engaging the community, engaging our community to provide for a diverse range of input, experiences, and stories in our review process, all by reporting those findings and ultimately to reform our police use of force policies or update them accordingly. What we're asking tonight to do is, of course, adopt the resolution so that it reflects that the city council, as a body, is committed to a pledge of implementing the four steps that are outlined in My Brothers Keepers Alliance, and really commit to a process of review, engage, report, and reform. In particular, what we'd like to do, and assuming council supports the resolution before you tonight, is get your input on our review process, as well as an engagement process, and combat the council with a plan at your next meeting. We recognize for example that it may be necessary to retain a moderator, a facilitator, to help that conversation with our community. That may not be what the council seeks. We want it to be a staff-driven process, or even a community-driven process, but we wanted to get council's input on a proposed engagement process. Obviously, the matter, as previously mentioned, was referred to the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee, and there's certainly an opportunity for public input and community input at that particular subcommittee. But I think what staff envisions is maybe a little bit more of an engaging process, where we might hold a workshop and really try to invite the community to provide their feedback on use of force policies. But staff also provided, I think, the idea that this may be an opportunity to really look at all city policies relative to their impact on social equity and fairness, and, you know, kind of more of a comprehensive review, but ultimately starting with the use of force policies. That's really the end of the report for me, Mayor, and councilmembers, but happy to entertain any questions that council may have about the recommendation to adopt the resolution in support of My Brothers Keepers Alliance pledge.
Thank you, David. And just before I open it up to my fellow council members, I want you to know that, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, David and myself called Superintendent Decker, and we invited the school board to participate in any public meetings and outreaches that we have, so that we can all hear with the same voice, we can all hear the same voice of what people have to say pertaining to racism and any type of prejudice in our community. I think it's important. So if you can think of any other organization, I thought of maybe the Boys and Girls Club, representative, and, but I want to hear from my fellow council members. So just so you know, the school board was invited tonight to have in their meeting, and Superintendent Decker was going to mention to them that an invitation will be coming. So why don't we go ahead and open it up? I'm not sure who would like to start. Melanie, you're the first face I see on the screen, if you'd like to go or pass the buck down to Jason.
Yeah, I guess I'll just add that, you know, as far as going to the subcommittee, I thought that would be just a good place to, you know, to gather ideas and approaches for how we do community outreach. So that's kind of what I would like to see us just facilitate at the subcommittee level, which is just easier to do business there. And then also, just, you know, on, you know, partnering with the school board, I think it's incredibly important, if we can bring resources in to facilitate public meetings, you know, it doesn't have to be on a council night or a school board meeting night, it can, you know, it can be, you know, different kinds of times through the day to, you know, and have it be more accessible to more people's schedules, whether that's Zoom or in person. So I'd like to see us, you know, when we are moving forward with maybe, you know, workshops or community education or community outreach, and what, you know, gathering information from people, that we definitely, you know, do it in different times, different methods, different capacities, and then, you know, and gather all of the information and come to come up with our work plan. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Melanie. Councilmembers, anyone else?
Please. Yes, please. Let me lower my hand here. You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, so I really like the idea of expanding to as many groups that would want to join, sending representatives if they want, or utilizing as much notice as we can give them to meet with their own collective body, come up with some sort of idea of questions they want to have answered. I also wouldn't discourage inviting the Police Officers Association. I think the Cloverdale rep is someone relatively local, and I wouldn't discourage allowing them being as a part of the dialogue either. The other thing I wonder, too, and this is kind of towards Chief Ferguson, I don't know if you'll have the answers to this off the top of your head, but I just thought I'd plant the seed if I can. Are we able to look at data based on reporting and see when calls escalated, where the initial point of contact was for reason X, and reason X was addressed, but then it escalated to something else, maybe further charges were given, or something along that nature? And then we might be able to start to create buckets in which we can ask the, the community to focus on. So one very brief example that comes to my head is how many times has a routine traffic stop escalated? What did that create? What did it put the officers under when the individual may be mad or anything like that? So again, that we can start creating buckets and really drive the conversation in a positive direction, because I believe as the elected officials, it's more than just a pledge, we're going to have to commit resources to this, like Melanie was saying, with a facilitator, and really just making sure that we do everything we can to influence a productive conversation and positive outcomes. And I really don't want to look back on this six months from now, three months from now, and say, yeah, it was really cool that we came out with this very powerful message, but we just weren't able to back it up. So I really like the direction of having the Police Finance and Admin Subcommittee, who meet monthly, you know, kind of take a leadership role on this, and really come back to council with, with things like I mentioned, you know, does Chief find out there is some data that could hold? Do we find a moderator where we want to figure out what kind of resources we have to commit to that? What kind of leniency do we want to give David to really kind of kick these things in motion where its time is on our side? And with that, I'm done. But I really, really support this, and I just want to see us kind of come out full-court press and just influence positive outcomes the best way we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, I too agree that we need to have a conversation, and we need to establish some timelines also. And it cannot just stay in a plan. It has to be, it has to be implemented. And the conversation is necessary because some members of the community see it as a divide, and it needs to be an opportunity to come together and to collaborate, to really understand the other point of view, and so on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. You know, I think one of the things that I'm hoping that Chair Bagby and I get out of the Finance Police Subcommittee is a timetable. And I know the city manager and I have had the conversation that I do not want this can kick down the road. I want to have our teeth well-sunk into it by the end of July. Here's the timetable. This is how we're going to handle the engagement with the community. This is what reviews turned up. I want to be very proactive with this. So Councilmember Cruz, we are not going to let it just sit there. I want to get on it right away. Mary Ann, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to pass over you, comments?
No, that's all right. No, I'm happy to see this being brought up. I think one thing for the Subcommittee, what I think we have to be really clear on is what do we expect as a community from the police department? Right now, we've got very little mental health services, we've got very little homeless services, we've got all of these things that always get kind of dumped on the police department. And I think it's really not fair when you expect a policeman to be a social worker. I mean, it's just, it's just too much. So I think we should be really clear on where we put our resources, and maybe we can get some mental health people up here, maybe we can get, you know, and I don't, I'm not saying I want to cut the police budget, so nobody get all upset about that, but I think it's important that we have clear boundaries on what we want as a community, and how we want our resources spent, because we expect a whole lot from them, because we're way up on this northern border and way away from services. And personally, I think that we ask almost too much of them on so many different levels. So I'd like that to be really clear and front and center.
You're absolutely correct, Councilmember Brigham, and, you know, we strive to be practicing community policing. And I think on the fourth bullet point, reform our communities' use of force policies, that has to be expanded, you know? How do we assist them with social workers? You know, when the 911 call comes in, the only person that really responds is the police, and they're expected to be a psychologist, a lawyer, the whole nine yards, and it's just too much to ask. So we have to reform our police departments into something else. But I think the chief understands, even though he's been with us a short time, that Cloverdale is building a community policing force. So Chief, I don't know if you, I don't want to put you on the spot, I'm prepared, but if you want to say a few words on your vision of how things should come down, I know we'll be discussing it on the July the 7th, and like I said, hopefully, Councilmember Bagby and I will come up with a timeline, topics, public meetings, getting more people involved. Let's just blow the doors off this thing, get it out there, and shake everything up and see what happens. Chief?
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I want to agree with pretty much everything Mary Ann said. It is a difficult task for us, and it is definitely hard at times. And I also want to agree, since she did happen to mention it, that, you know, I would not be in favor of diverting funds or taking away from the, from the police budget, because we really need the staffing levels that we have to continue to provide the level of service that we do, and I think we do a very good job of doing that. So taking anything away from us to accomplish that is going to be much more difficult. I am, however, very much in support of any kind of programs that will help educate, maybe to create jobs, or whatever it needs to be done, I'd be very much in favor of that. But I think the challenge in that is going to be the funding mechanism to make that happen, and it always is. But certainly, taking away from police, I would not be in support of. I will add that, you know, we definitely are about community policing. We do a lot of things every year, and we're not afraid to step that game up if we need to. I'm certainly encouraging opening dialogue to community members under whatever platform that needs to be, so that we can address our use of force policies, and just reassure the community that we're committed to working with them to provide, you know, professional services to every single community member. That's our goal here. We do not, under any circumstance, tolerate racism at all, and we receive a lot of training currently, and will continue to receive. And so I just wanted to make those comments in regards to Councilmember Brigham.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, as, as we have all said, we need to have expectations, and we need to know exactly what it is that we would like to see in terms of the relationship of the police and all of us in the city and all the constituents. Right now, there's a pending MOU for an SRO, and this is going to be put on hold for right now, because we need to revise what changes have been made. And at the same time, we also need to discuss what is the objective of an SRO, and who are the police that are going to be assigned to serve as an SRO, et cetera? So the more clarity that we have, the better understanding we all have in the community.
Thank you. I totally agree, and again, that was another conversation I had with the city manager the other day. It was kind of like, if we took money completely off the table, and we said, okay, you know, here's a, here's a police resource officer, what is his job? What is he expected to do? And how does he do it? Maybe it's not a police officer, and maybe it's a combination of a, of a safety officer and a psychologist. I just don't know. But we'll definitely find that out. Councilmembers, anything else before I open this up to the public? And then I'll bring it back to you as well. Well, let me open up the public comment on this item only, and at the Performing Arts Center, we have no, no hands being raised. Irene, how about in the waiting room?
We have no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to bring it back to the, to the city council. We have a resolution on the table, if somebody would like to make that resolution.
I'll offer the resolution.
Oh, second.
Yeah, yes, mic is off.
I can't hear him.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope, I just turned my mute, my mic back on. First, foremost, I was saying thank you to the mayor and members of council. It sounds like it was unanimous support for, for the resolution and the feedback we received tonight. Just to kind of recap, is that there's a need for a timetable. There's really a desire to have a conversation with the community, and kind of define that as an opportunity to, to listen and to hear feedback on our policies, really set out what the expectations are for this process, what do we want to accomplish? Ultimately, what's the plan for? Ultimately, what's the plan for how we are going to, to implement the possible reform that may be recommended or come, come forward? And, you know, really define how we want to collaborate with the community, particularly on community policing. And it sounds like in terms of the engagement process, we'll, we'll let the Finance Admin, the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee to kind of better define that. Ultimately, that may need to come back to council if there is some funding needs to support the, the engagement process. But we do have the first meeting on Tuesday, July 7th, and we'll agendize it so that it enables the Finance Admin Police Subcommittee to, you know, to start that process. And ultimately, if, if funding is needed, we'll bring it back. So just wanted to make sure I recapped and addressed the, the council's comments on this important item tonight.
Thank you. Councilmembers, if there's no other comments, there's a res- yes, Councilmember Bagby?
I just wanted to reiterate my comments from the last meeting. I want to make sure that, you know, one of the things that we're looking at, at Police Finance and Administration is the, the police budget. And I really want to take a look at what our state mandated spent, what's, what state mandated spending and then what's discretionary? Because I think what that's going to do is really outline for the public why, you know, 53% of our budget goes to the police. Because so many of the, so much of the budget is just, it's state mandates and it's things that, that have to be, that we have to spend money on. And so it kind of answers, you know, it addresses the issue of, and you need that information if you're going to address the question of, do you defund the police? Because, I mean, the fact is, is that we already know what defunding looks like. We defunded mental health services. We've defunded homeless services. We've defunded schools. So we know what that looks like. It's like we're saying that, we, we set our priorities as a society, as a society, on the war on drugs and on, on criminalizing drug use. And what we're doing now is we're, you know, we're reaping the benefit, the, we're reaping the fruits of that, what I think was really misaligned public policy. So it's not, it's, it's really important for, for folks to understand that we're going to do everything that we can do on a local level and what we can influence. But it's also, you know, we, this needs to go to the state and federal level. This is work that we're going to have to do lobbying. We, you know, Cloverdale, City of Cloverdale, we don't provide mental health services. We don't provide homeless services. The county does. And the fact is, we are not getting our fair share to do the work that we need to do. And that needs to change as how that money gets allocated once it comes to the county and then it needs to change, you know, at the, at the state level as well. So this is a multi-level, heavy lift. And so if we, if we talk about defunding or reallocation, it's really what we're, as a society, saying, we are not going to invest in the war on drugs anymore and criminalization. We are going to focus on services for folks. That's what we're going to invest our money in. And in the meantime, we need to make sure that we have a well-funded Police Department that protects us from violent crime because that's what they want to be focusing on. That's what they need to be focusing on. They're not social workers. They're not mental health, you know, workers. They need to be keeping the community safe and that needs to be their focus. And that's, to me, that's the concern about, you know, in, in the, any increases of, on the SRO contract is, you know, in a time when people are, you know, looking at, you know, why are we, why are we spending more? Or, or why are we arresting kids at an early age? Why are we increasing the, you know, or looking at increasing SRO contractor, increasing their role at the schools? I don't think it's appropriate. So, and I think it's completely appropriate that the council take a look at that and that, you know, that we're setting the priorities there. So, so, so as far as, I just want to reiterate, in addition to what David outlined, I just want to reiterate what I mentioned at the last meeting about the additional role and the, the review that needs to happen at the Subcommittee level so that we can bring that information back to the council and, and, and share it with the community so that they can use it as a tool to lobby our representatives to really make substantive changes that we need to see. That's all I have.
If I can, wait, just to kind of, may I, Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment about what Melanie said.
Yes, please.
Melanie, I, I really agree with what you have to say. And what, what, what I hope I'm taking away from this is we're, we're not demonizing our police force here. They, you know, we, we are looking at the fact that us as elected officials and the people that came before us, not necessarily just Cloverdale, but the state, we have become a hindrance to their ability to do their job effectively by setting their priorities and then sometimes not relooking at those for decades, such as your example is the war on drugs. And so I, I really felt the takeaway that we're not demonizing the police and I, and I want to reiterate that. I have no intention of demonizing the police. I want to look at the tools you have available and figure out where we're hindering your ability while we address what escalates these issues and what can we do to ensure that violence has not escalated, hopefully ever, but never unnecessarily. So anyway, at the risk of getting too far into the weeds, I support this. I'm ready to offer a vote, but I really liked your takeaway of, of us not demonizing the police force over this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz?
Yeah, I mean, that is not the intention here at all. But we all need to take into account that more than 50% of the budget goes to the Police Department and we need to make sure that we revise practices and that we also evaluate what is really most necessary in our community. So there's not demonization of our police force, but there is a culture in all Police Departments and we need to make sure that we, we continue to be a good Police Department in Cloverdale. So this is not an attack on our police. It's just a moment of reflection, a moment of revision and a moment of continuous collaboration with a more solid foundation based on what's happening in our world today. Even things such as cyberbullying, such as all other means of communication and access to information, like using drones, et cetera. All these things need to be revised. We need to look into it, make sure that it goes along with the moral and the values of the community. Not demonization here, just a clear understanding and revision of, of, of what's been written.
Thank you. Any other council members would like to make a comment? Staff? Oh, I'm sorry, Melanie, I can't, you're not in my picture frame here. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I forgot. There was one more thing I wanted to add for us to review on the Subcommittee. And I, I'm sure that it's kind of an open, a fairly open item, but I had forwarded information about the National League of Cities REAL program and it's come highly recommended. And I just wanted to make sure that that gets on the agenda for us to look at as well.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'm, I'm just going to close, close it and I just want to, just let you know that I, I also support our police, definitely. And, and that's why I want to add to reform, it's, it's under that community where we, the police use of force policies, you know, it's got to be, we have to give them tools to do their job. And the, the tool is qualified people to help them with some of the responses. Like I said, they're not social workers, they're not lawyers, but they're the first ones we expect to protect us. And, and Chief, I'm, I'm really counting on you and the whole department to come forward with some real good suggestions. I know you meet on a monthly basis with the Chiefs and you're all going through this. So one of the things at the mayor's meeting that we're hoping comes out of this is some type of consistency throughout the county so that no matter where the police are functioning, it's kind of the same set of rules.
So, Mr. Mayor, I believe there's a motion on the floor from Vice Mayor Turner and I'd like to second the item.
Okay. So with that being said, what did you say, Councilmember Bagby? I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't pick that up.
I believe there is a, a motion by Vice Mayor Turner and I would like to second the item.
Yes, and I, I thought I was talking to the motion, but thank you. Let me have a roll call, please.
So, you're right, you're right, there's.
I thought we were going to, I was going to offer the resolution.
Oh. But, you know what? You're right because I forgot.
So it's not a motion, it's a resolution.
Resolution.
Are we done?
Yes. Yes, Councilmember Brigham, please go ahead.
Okay. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale affirming its pledge to the My Brothers Keeper Alliance pledge to address police use of force policies.
Thank you. And that was seconded by Jason Turner, Vice Mayor. Irene, could we have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and move right now to public comment? So I'm going to open this, this up to the public. Anyone wishing to address the City Council on items that are not on tonight's agenda may do so. When you step up to the dais or the city clerk brings you into the meeting, just state your name for the record and share with us what you have to say. In, in the Performing Arts Center, there's nobody raising their hand to, to say anything. So Irene, do we have anybody in the, in the waiting room?
I went on to Mayor.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment section and I'm going to bring it back to proclamations and presentations and there are none, none. Next is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be approved with one motion unless a council member or the, a member of the public wishes to have the item removed and discussed separately.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I had written to David to make sure that in the minutes it says commi- Latino community, not a general statement on your apology last week.
That's fine.
And other than that, I'm fine with everything else.
Okay.
Mayor, councilmembers, the comment by Councilmember Cruz is, is on, is on item one, the minutes. And let the record reflect that Councilmember Cruz is indicating that she'd like the minutes, the minutes to be approved as amended to reflect on page seven. And Mayor Walter's comment that he's expressing apology to the Latino community.
And, and I apologize, I apologize for that. I didn't know that that was a change being requested. So can we still go ahead and approve them all with one action? Jose?
Yes, just, just the motion to approve as amended works here, Mayor.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Okay, next item is item number eight, communications. David, is that you?
Mayor, members of council, including the fact that this communication received regarding the use of rubber bullets, I think this is an appropriate item to refer to the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee and consider along with the use of force policies. But maybe I'd like the opportunity for Chief Ferguson just to maybe make a quick or brief comment on whether our Police Department utilizes rubber bullets or not.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We, we do not have these at the Police Department. And furthermore, our policy is very specific about training requirements on this and nobody is trained in the use of these. So as it relates to tear gas and those rubber balls or anything to that nature, we do not have those at the Police Department.
Again, Mayor, members of council, I, I recommend that this, this matter be considered and reviewed under the use of force policies by the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee to facilitate any additional discussions that Subcommittee would like to have relative to this particular correspondence. It's, it's very detailed and I think it may need a little bit of time for the Subcommittee members to kind of work through. There's, there's, there's a lot of detail.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure the Chair doesn't mind that at all. Thank you. Next item is Subcommittee Reports. And the first is the Finance Administration and Police. And we, Chair Bagby?
Yes, I believe we meet, it's July 7th and at 4:00 PM. Does anyone have any questions about me regarding the bullet items?
You know, the only thing we might want to consider, and I, I think as that date gets a little closer, is to see if City Hall or, or how we would actually, I guess we would do that with a Zoom one way. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We need the biggest space than the conference room, but I, I completely forgot we do everything by Zoom.
Yeah, I think it's going to be Zoom. So I guess the only thing that I would get, I'd give Mark an opportunity to give us an update on drought conditions if he has anything new.
Okay.
No, nothing new to report in terms of drought conditions, Mayor and, and councilmembers. It is dry, as you can see, as you can, you know? And so we had the third driest year. Operational changes are going to be happening next week and we need to be ready.
And am I mistaken that you were going to possibly bring a, a drought condition, a drought condition change to us at some point?
Yeah, it's scheduled right now for the next council meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next is the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee and that's Councilmember Brigham and, and myself. And we did discuss and review the temporary signed permits and we're comfortable, we're recommending no changes to the City Council at this time. And I, I guess that was about it. Mary Ann, did you have anything to add to that?
On the emergency preparedness, access to generators and potential shelters, I have been working with Katie at the Citrus Fair and Jim DiMartini and a group that is getting the, trying to get the Citrus Fair ready in case we have a lot of problems with fire and relocations and we're going to need a shelter type situation like we did last time. There are two things that they were asking about specifically. One was easier access for money for food. And we put aside 5,000 or 6,500, something like that. Their biggest question was how do we access that? And I told them to access it through the city manager, but there is some discussion on that, how like if something happens and they want it the same day to start setting up and doing work, what would be an easy way of doing it? Gift cards, where would they be for? And then the generator issue, when we were discussing the generators, I started discussing with them the idea of a mobile generator that we could use all over the city because I had been in contact with Mike McGuire's office and working with Rebecca from his office to help fund a generator that would be a large one that would be mobile. They don't seem to want to do that. They would rather, I think, do a much bigger, now, I think the bid came in at almost $100,000. And it would be a permanent installation there. So when, in fact, I got that email yesterday and then another one today, this morning. But I'm thinking that, I instructed them that I would be happy to work with them and be backup, but McGuire's office is being very nice about helping us find the money to do that. to do that, but since it was going to be based at the citrus fair and not a mobile unit, that I felt like Katie should, from the citrus fair, should deal directly with Rebecca, and it should be done in that way. Those were the two big points they brought up, and I think we're working through them. So that's all I have to say about that, any questions?
Yeah, well, for Councilmember Bagby, Melanie, I guess it was a few months back, I believe it was Jeff from Sonoma Clean Power came up and addressed us at a Subcommittee, and he had mentioned that PG&E was looking to put generators in at our substation.
Yeah.
And do you know where we are with that?
I believe it's, I can't quote you our date, Kevin might, I don't know if Kevin remembers, but you know, we were, they are actively pursuing that option in Cloverdale, Windsor, Fort Bragg, several other cities. And Cloverdale would probably be slated for construction about 2022. So you know, nothing this year and probably nothing next year, but I know that the Airboard is pushing back somewhat, and Sonoma Clean Power is pushing back as well, because it's more complicated than just providing emergency energy at our substations. PG&E is trying to take resource adequacy credit, and they're trying to, you know, pull some shenanigans to make it count double for other requirements, and Sonoma Clean Power and CCAs are pushing back on that attempt. And so it's far from resolved, and we definitely aren't going to see something, we aren't going to see anything at the substation next year. But at the same time, you know, Sonoma Clean Power is also trying to, has the business program where small businesses can apply for battery, for help with funding on, and financing on battery backups. So if they already have solar, then they can, you know, get some extra money for battery backups exactly for PSPs, but that would be, that's for businesses right now. In addition to that, they're negotiating with Terra Verde, which the City of Cloverdale has actually talked to before. I believe they've already negotiated a deal to offer municipalities kind of the audit services for, you know, where could you have solar, where could you have batteries, where are your, where are your biggest needs right now? And then, so I believe that agreement has been negotiated, they're also negotiating that for school districts in Sonoma and Mendocino County, so it's kind of going like, it's kind of going like this, like, you know, a bunch of, we're kind of, I think we have it surrounded, and this year and next year is really going to tell the story as to, you know, and I don't, I don't think it's a, it's not an either or thing, like PG&E is going to, you know, install backups at the substation, the citrus fair is going to have, you know, battery backup, it's going to be several of these solutions, kind of, you know, all working together ultimately, that's what we're going to see. So that's kind of the, unless, I don't know, Kevin has anything to add on that?
Thank you.
I don't, we are conducting a large energy audit for all the entire city, and we did discuss that at the Planning and Sustainability Committee. That should be kicking off next month, we've had an initial meeting. There may have be some opportunity for photovoltaic out of that, and we'll talk to them. It's actually PG&E's turnkey program, which is on bill financing. So just the report is, we have met with them, but we're setting up a meeting for a walkthrough, and I'll report back.
Oh, and we're also working with the Sonoma County Group as well, Energy and Sustainability, isn't that right, Kevin?
Yeah, they're the ones, yeah, they're the ones who actually turned us on to this group. So Elliot in the Sonoma office thought we'd be a good fit for this program, and he introduced us and did the kickoff meeting, and so now we're waiting to do our walkthrough.
Okay. And I see 992 wants to say something, is that Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, it is, yes, it is. I have a question for Melanie, you mentioned that there will be some opportunities for businesses, is there any way that Nina could be involved so that she could engage the business community into these initiatives and for have, to have them understand what it is and what the requirements and so on?
And that's going to be really important, the Sonoma Clean Power, I believe that they just published that press release this week, and I'll make sure that I get, that gets to Nina, but when it was announced at our board meeting, I made sure, it's like, you're talking to Marcos at EDB, you guys are getting, pushing this out, and they said, yes, 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 we're pushing this out through Sonoma County Economic Development Board, through the multiple chambers, and I'll just make sure that we bring it to her attention, because, and that program is really interesting, because it's really aimed at, like, the grocery stores, big grocery stores often have either, like we saw the last PSPS, they have their own resources, they either have big generators, or they bring down refrigerator trucks, it's really the small mom and pop stores, the neighborhood stores that people really rely on, you know, during a PSPS for ice and, you know, frozen Snickers bars and that kind, I mean, you know, your essentials during a PSPS. So it's really appropriate for those kinds of businesses to make sure, and you know, small restaurants like Eagles Nest and Pick some places like that, and so that they don't lose their stock, so it's really more appropriate for that, those sizes of businesses, and of course, that's the backbone of business in Cloverdale, so I think it has a lot of potential in the community. So I'll communicate with her, just reiterate, make sure she gets that information out to our business community.
Thank you. Okay, then why don't we move on to Public Works Subcommittee, anything to report out there?
Well, you know, the highly awaited stop sign that was requested on the north side, it's there, I drove by, very nice, and all the signs and all, there's no way you're going to miss it or any way that you're going to go through it. We also had Hector work on the creek, and we have one sign, we need to work with open space a little bit more so we could get more signage, and I know they have signage and they have funding for that, so we should touch our funds for that, that's why it's going to take a little longer, and that's what I said to the constituents. And we still need to have the walking path signage, but you know, at this point, we just have to take it day at a time, we have so many other priorities at this point. Just keep yelling at the kids, you know? So we'll be meeting soon again. And then it's Jason and.
Thank you. How about the City Fire Subcommittee?
Yeah, so we haven't had a meeting since the last update, it says here next scheduled will be October 12th, but we are going to work with the group and see if we can get a special meeting set up in August, just because we're right in, in the kind of scary part of fire season, August, September, October, and what seems to be going on all 12 months these days, but, so we want to get a little bit more frequency during the fire season, so I expect an update from the council on that fact, and other than that, no other, no other reportable activity.
Thank you. How about the City School Subcommittee?
Well, there is a board meeting today simultaneously. They are really happy with the stop sign, we have a new superintendent, and I'm sorry, I don't have her name written here in front of me. It's a, it's a young, energetic person with whom we hope all of us can meet in the near future, and the MOU on the SRO is pending at this moment, but it's almost finished, but we need to go over that. We're going to be meeting with more frequency, and I don't recall, let's see, July 20th? Oh, we already met? Oh, no, we're meeting July 20th, it's just that everything is around my surgery date, okay, so I'm just a little skeptical here with all the dates and so on, but yeah, if not Jason, if I'm not available, Jason will be there, he's been in all the meetings so far. Anything else I left behind, Jason? Oh, yes, we had the American Heart Association make a short presentation to the, to the committee, because they have some plans, some education plans that we could start in our school system. So that is going to be discussed with the new superintendent. Anything else, Jason?
No, I think you covered all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The Homeless Community Advisory Group, we haven't met, and we'll be meeting soon, Kevin will let us know. Next is Council Reports, verbal reports, anything that wasn't covered in the reports submitted in writing or in the Subcommittee, please, now's your time to say something. Councilmember Cruz, your hands up?
Yes, I have been working with Daily Acts, it is an organization out of Sebastopol, and they have been giving what is called gardening kits in different cities throughout the county, and I was able to get on the tail end of it, and it's going to happen July 17th here in Cloverdale. And I'm doing this because I was able to reallocate the funds that were given to the Cultural Committee for S.A. Chavez Celebration that had to be postponed, so now we're going to be doing three things with all the funds that were collected from three different donors. We are going to have the gardening kits, we're going to have scholarships for some students in the area where the funds were allocated to, and we're also going to be able to give some donation to the senior centers so that they can continue with the Sonoma County Family Meals on Fridays.
Well, that is good news, what was the, what was the date again on that and the location?
The date is July 17th, we are hoping that it'll be between 2:00 and 4:00, it's going to be first come, first served, and it's going to be held at Soil King Grounds, because we need to be able to drive in, pick up, and leave, nobody's getting out of the car, we're going to just do like when they do the food bank, that they just give a bag and you continue. So that's, and we've been lucky that Patrick King has sold the soil to us at cost, probably even lower than that, so that we could do that, because there are different kinds of donors here, we have the people who give the plants and the seeds, somebody who gives the pots at a cost, and then the soil, the seeds, and the pots, and there's a bag also, I don't know who gives it, somebody does, but yeah, and so some of the money is coming from District 4 that Supervisor Boer had given, and two other donors that do not want to be disclosed. So this is going to be a good event, we're hoping to have at least 150 kits.
Good, good, thank you. Any other council members with verbal reports?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a real quick one, attended via Zoom the Planning Commission meeting last night, and I'd really encourage my colleagues, if you haven't had a chance already, to take a look at the initial design review of the Bumgardner project.
Thank you. And I'm just going to piggyback on that a little bit and say I was, I also had the opportunity to attend the meeting last evening, and Kevin, you did a fantastic job presenting the program, as did Raphael. Also, I was really impressed with our three new planning commissioners, some really pointed questions and some well-thought-out questions, so they were really, they're really to be commended, the whole planning commission did a great job on that project, and thank you for breaking it up into two meetings, because there is a lot to digest there.
It was a very long meeting.
Yep. Let's see, I just did something to my computer, but that's okay, we're almost over here. Any other council reports? No, okay, how about legislative reports and direction?
Mayor, members of council, there's a letter in your packet authorizing the, a letter of support for SB 793, this relates to the American Heart Association pursuing a ban on baits and flavored tobacco products. Happy to report that the City of Cloverdale already has similar provisions in our municipal code, but this is, letter is in support of a statewide ban, and this came out of the Joint City School Subcommittee, in which we asked if there was any opportunities for collaboration with the American Heart Association, and they asked for our support on legislation, letter in your packet that does provide for that, and we're just asking for council support to authorize the mayor to sign the letter.
Okay, hearing no objections, I'll go ahead and sign that right after our meeting. Next item is status update on current emergencies, and that's COVID-19. David, do you have anything new for us?
Mayor, not a lot to, new to report, we are closely monitoring the dashboard, we have noticed that, you know, the cases are upticking in Sonoma County, and I just want to reiterate the importance of utilizing a face mask when you're either entering a business or a retail shop or restaurant. It remains important to utilize that tool for trying to mitigate the spread in our community, we are trying to get the word out, the chamber is developing some materials, again, to encourage and support the use of face masking. We're really at this point kind of moving away from shelter in place, it's still a shelter in place order, and really moving towards a mitigation strategy, which, you know, employs again the face mask, physical distancing, and appropriate sanitation practices, and we recognize we've been in this for over three months now, and sometimes it's a little eerie to continue, but we would just want to encourage our community to continue to be safe and be well and practice those mitigation practices, so we can continue to make our way through this pandemic crisis that's affecting our community.
Okay, thank you, are there any questions from city council members on the report?
Yes, please, if I may.
Yes, please.
Kevin, just high level, how's reopening City Hall going, that first phase you were talking about, have you hit any roadblocks on any equipment that you need that we might be able to support you on? How's that going? My next question and final question is regarded to finance, I didn't see Suzie on the panel, but if you're able to speak at all about where we are with projections on COVID expenses and what the new financial outlook looks like, I know she's been putting a tremendous amount of work into that, and I just wondered if you had any, any brief updates on that, thank you.
Well, I'll defer the finance question to David, we have been discussing the reopening at our senior staff meetings.
I didn't mean to call you out, Kevin, I meant to say, David, I apologize.
Okay.
I apologize about that.
I was ready to go, but okay.
Vice Mayor Turner, members of council, I'm happy to respond to Vice Mayor's questions, kind of a twofold question, you know, starting with reopening, senior staff is currently looking at kind of a phased approach relative to opening City Hall, of course, we have our dedicated public work staff and police department who are really working full-time, you know, in the, you know, in their locations where their, where their work is performed, most of which is outside the office, but we are currently planning to open starting July 7th, so the week, the week after July, opening Tuesday and Thursday from 9:00 to 12:00, again, we're looking at it as a phased approach to start, our opening up City Hall for the community, particularly members of the community that have a business to conduct at City Hall, I'm otherwise very proud of our staff and responding to, you know, any issues and needs by our community without being open, so we, I think we've done a really effective job, but we recognize there are certain benefits to, to having an open City Hall, and the practices that we will employ will be set out very shortly to the community, we're going to plan to implement, you know, appropriate health protocols to ensure that we're addressing the order, the health order requirements of physical distancing, you know, appropriate sanitation and face masking, so that'll all be part of the protocol for folks that want to visit City Hall, and more than likely will be, you know, living a number of visitors at any one time to the lobby, so to minimize, you know, opportunities for interaction in a way that is adverse to physical distancing, so that's, we'll be publishing those protocols here fairly quickly to get that out, make sure the community is aware of that. With respect to the other question about finances, we have engaged the services of managing. we have engaged the services of management partners to develop a component to our financial model to really track the impacts of the COVID-19 emergency. And obviously, we've done a lot of work to develop that financial forecast in the first place. And this will help us to identify more specifically, more discreet, the revenue impacts that are, or being generated from, from this, you know, the closure of businesses, the loss of some of the TOT revenue and impacts to other revenue sources. So we can really start that, that dialogue with the Finance and Admin, Finance, Admin and Police Subcommittee, which the council referred that kind of budget discussion to. So again, the goal is to help inform the Subcommittee and Council on, and keep updated on the impacts of, you know, the financial impacts of COVID-19 relative to, to our budget, both on the, on the, on the revenue side, but also on the expenditure side.
Thank you, David. Any other questions, Councilmembers? Councilmember Bagby?
David, do you want to talk any about the CARES Act funding and the, and the budget that was just passed? About how we probably will be able to expect some money, but.
Absolutely. Happy to provide an update. Staff, through, through our elected state representatives did make a strong case for additional allocation of funding. Obviously, we work closely also with our, our partners at the League of California Cities to try to come up with a formula that would support a fair allocation. Because the way it was distributed through the CARES Act was either through the state as a direct allocation or to cities above a 500,000 population. And the, we're working with our legislature. We want to try to come up with kind of a per capita basis for distribution of the CARES Act funding that was distributed straight to the state. And, you know, the, kind of maybe unfortunately, the governor did have kind of his own proposed use of those funds. But nonetheless, it should result in an allocation. I think the legislation was written so that cities of our size would receive a minimum allocation of $50,000. And it looks like right now we're, we'd be on top to be allocated somewhere between 50 and 75,000 in CARES Act funding that was allocated to the state via the federal government under the CARES Act. Obviously, we're, so that's one piece. The other component is that the Senate and the House continue to have a discussion about additional relief. And I think there's starting to be some serious discussion around the idea of providing direct relief to municipal government. And obviously, we support that. We think there's a tremendous need. And when we have more concrete information and we want to take a legislative position, we'll certainly bring that forward.
All right, now you have to say something happy or funny because that was depressing.
Anything else, Councilmembers?
No, Jason, we might have some money. That's good.
Well, let's remember, that, that, that funding is for the initial emergency response. It is not for, it, 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 it'll cover our food bank bill. That'll be about it. But it's better than what was originally put forward, so. And that is, it does not represent subvention or, you know, making up for our, our income losses at all. It's really just for that emergency, and that's, it's for that initial response.
Well, as long as the governor gets his share and gets to use it the way he wants, that's what's really important. So, anything else, Councilmembers? Okay, well, I'm going to, I'm threatening you. I'm going to bring the meeting to an end if you don't have anything else. Okay. Irene, thank you very much. Staff, thank you. David, thank you. Marta, when is your operation, please?
July 1st.
Oh, man!
Well, you take care and heal well.
Yeah, I'll be in the next meeting.
Is Jason going to come visit you?
Just make sure you do what the physical therapist tells you to, okay?
Yeah, Jason's going to make sure I do the right thing.
No visitor policy. I can duck and move that, no visitor policy.
There you go.
He's going to come in and manipulate your knee for you, so.
No, that's going to be Wes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
Good luck, Council.
Good night.
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you.